Real life, street stars, man, we have a special guest in the building and we're gonna do something a little different today. I'm gonna let him introduce himself.
Hey man, say man, it's your brother none other than Devonte D Peters, the people's champ, uh, uh, Triple D Peters, you know what I'm saying? I'm for the streets, I'm for the working class, uh, what separates me from all the other candidates is I'm not gonna put a business over the neighborhood.
So you get all the way into it, brother.
Let's get it.
Let's get it, man.
Slow me down, baby.
Before we get into the deepness of it, man, tell the people where you from?
Okay.
And what made you step into the role that you stepped into now? What made you walk the path you walking now?
Well, straight like that, so I'm from, I'm really from Africa, but I don't know what parts, so I rep Oak Cliff, you understand me, Oak Cliff, Texas. I actually grew up in my district, uh, you know, all over, uh, Oak Cliff, you know, different areas, you know what I mean? But what inspired me to, uh, run this race and get down in this political atmosphere was actually my comrade Yafeo Balagun. Uh, I really respect his brother, his work with, uh, GMF and, uh, you know, which we'll talk about later, but, uh, and you know, just in the streets of Dallas, man, doing real things that you, you know, you just have to be around to believe. So that's what inspired me, um, also, but what made me stick with this is, um, being educated on, uh, the conditions of my community and who's the leadership that's supposed to address these issues. So, uh, that's what made me stick with it. And, um, I see, you know, there is a lack of leadership and, um, these people who are in these positions, they not like us, you know what I mean? They're not like people like myself, uh, regular working class individuals, um, you know, just everyday people. There are people who, uh, come from different backgrounds and, uh, don't have our interests or might come from a background, but they've been bought out and they've been, uh, bought by a corporation and, uh, you know, uh, entity.
Um, would you say that you running was partly based on frustration of seeing what the leaders in your community was kinda running and then doing?
Yeah, definitely, like I said, yeah, of course, um, it's frustration, it's like, you know, um, I do come from the activist community, uh, the activist background and I'm gonna state for the record, cause, uh, the Dallas Morning News tried to play me and say, uh, that everything that I, my innovative ideas were, um, 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 you know, concentrated into just, they minimized my, my work into just activism, but it was community activists, civil rights activists like Martin Luther King who passed the Voting Rights Act and things of that nature, so, um, but yeah, so, so, um, uh, the frustration, um, just not, just not being minimized to activism and protesting and things like that, which was part of the Dallas Nine, which I came here last time to be about that, but, uh, you know, so I'm on both sides of the fence. I'm, I'm standing with the people, like who was, uh, protesting for, uh, Da- Da Lee, La Dejanique Lee, who was assaulted in Deep Ellum by, uh, uh, Austin Punk Sheffield, you dig, um, so I'm, I'm with the people, even though I'm still out on bond, uh, for the Dallas Nine situation, but I'm standing with the people and, um, that definitely separates me from, uh, these other pe- these other cats.
What makes you think you can win?
What makes me think I, um, excuse me, brother, I've already won, you understand me? It is about, uh, twenty, uh, some less than twenty days until the election, but I've already won. The people know the right decision, the right choice to make on May fourth, early voting is April twenty second to the thirtieth, uh, make the right decision. But look, um, uh, I have the energy, you understand me? I have the, uh, the, uh, the versatility. I'm able to connect with the youth, connect with the audiences of, of those who don't vote. They say it's about forty-six thousand registered voters in my district, but, um, only about approximately four thousand, um, particip- really less than four thousand participate in the elections in our district, but I'm able to tap into those, uh, people who don't vote because I look like them. Most people don't vote, um, because they don't, you know, they, they're tired of politicians, they tired of people that don't look like them, that don't speak the language, that don't walk the walk, um, with them, and then so I am a reflection of somebody who does that and that, uh, motivates them to vote.
Now, common sense people will understand what you're trying to do for your community in the city of Dallas, but those who only indulge in street politics, what would be their motivation?
What would be their motivation? Because I'm your brother, you understand me? Like, I'm your brother, I'm, I'm here to represent you. So look, we got things that, uh, you know, I'm sure you heard of the concept of gentrification or, uh, getting pushed out in your community. Just say, you know, you been in your hood for, uh, so such and so long, but you gotta relocate and get out of that because your granny or your people, um, are getting forced out due to the, um, property taxes being raised up because, um, uh, your city council person decided they're gonna go against you and your neighborhood's wishes and they gonna put this Walmart or this, uh, corporation, this entity here that's gonna lower the, uh, property, uh, excuse me, lower the, uh, um, raise the taxes or lower your property values and, uh, making you wanna leave your environment. So we can, uh, stop things like that by being invested in our hood, you understand me? Buying the block, things of that nature.
Definitely, we got a lot of young, uh, listeners, uh, that are, you know, do come from, uh, let's say hip hop culture, uh, some of the, uh, people that you say don't vote, they're probably watching this, um, go ahead and, uh, use this as far as, um, to discuss the specific agendas that you want to, of course, try to bring upon with your term and upon winning.
Okay, definitely, so if it's, uh, you know, young, young folks out there, young Gs, young goddesses, young guys out there, uh, tuning in right now, then, uh, understand that they just passed a juvenile curfew ordinance, February twenty-seventh, that criminalizes the youth for being outside past eleven PM. So it's summertime coming up, if you plan to be in, uh, be in the crib, uh, at eleven and before, then you good. But if you, uh, plan on hanging out, then, uh, this is an issue for you because the police will discriminate on you and you know how they policing our communities, you understand me? And, uh, so things like that overturning the juvenile curfew ordinance that criminalizes the family and also puts a further strain on the working class, the everyday person who, um, um, these, these fines and citations, um, it only affects the poor class, the working class, the everyday person. And then, uh, we know the culture of, of, uh, policing in Dallas and in the black and brown communities, you dig? So, uh, I think that was an insult, but also, um, other than overturning the juvenile curfew ordinance, I wanna bring a health food grocery store, not just a grocery store to our district, but a health food grocery store, not just any health food grocery store, I ain't just talking about sprouts, I ain't just talking about Whole Foods and all of them. I'm talking about going to people in my district and my community and saying, hey, do y'all wanna invest into a, uh, into your own community with this grocery store? Do y'all wanna put this, uh, money up and make this happen? That's the way we can fight, uh, gentrification by, uh, not allowing developers to come into our community and push us out. So, um, also, um, um, a strong police oversight. My campaign is not accepting money from big corporations, big banks, nor the police union, you understand me? Because of the relationship, uh, that the Dallas Police Department has had with black people, uh, and brown people in Dallas, Texas. Um, the Dallas Police Association was also the people who, uh, or the organization that paid for Amber Geiger's, uh, uh, bail and things like that when she got out, so you, you understand, so that's why I'm not accepting, uh, donations and there's other things that I'm working on, but my main thing is being an advocate for the streets, being an advocate for the, uh, the person and not putting businesses over people.
Now, um, now that you said that, uh, you spoke that you said you're not accepting money from corporations and the police and things of that nature.
That's right.
That puts you in a position of opposition.
That's right.
How does a brother like you plan to protect yourself and your interests and your people around you? Because I'm, for lack of better words, brothers like you just tend to disappear.
Hey, straight like that, um, well, uh, I, I know that is a reality, you know, um, they labeled us community activists and things like that, uh, in our community and, um, you know, and you know what happens to so-called community activists and things like that? Uh, I think this is a real reality, but, um, one thing that, which is something that everybody needs to do, every black person in America needs to arm theirself, defend theirselves and, um, because, uh, self-preservation is the, uh, the first, the, the, the first instinct of any organism is to preserve yourself and to stay here. That's why, um, I've actually started my journey, uh, this journey, this political journey with, uh, Gorilla Mainframe, uh, GMF, who I've had the opportunity to train with, uh, my comrade Rockem Balagun is standing on my left. Um, this is a brother I've been training with, uh, for some years now, uh, on, uh, self-defense, uh, training and also, you know, teaching our communities. And this brother was actually the first, uh, um, what they call black identity extremists, um, to be, uh, pro- you know, uh, charged by the feds, but he, uh, locked up by the feds, excuse me, let me not, let me, man, let me, let me, let me get to, you feel like talking, man? Oh, okay, I apologize, yeah, 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 yeah.
No, I definitely didn't wanna touch on that because one thing that some of your opposition may say is that, you know, in, in your district, there are situations where, you know, guns are prevalent, um, you know, a lot of the deaths and the violence, uh, do happen a lot from gun violence. Um, what is your stand on that? What is your thought process on that? And, you know, how do you look at it as far as rectifying, if not conditioning that?
I think a lot of that is, um, actually, uh, due to, um, uh, not adhering to proper gun safety, uh, you know, things like that. Uh, because it's always safety first, you don't play, this, it's not, uh, an instrument to play with or anything like that. So a lot of these deaths are preventable because, um, people don't, uh, adhere to gun safety, uh, first off. And then, um, you know, to, to go beyond that, uh, which is, you know, a primary issue, but to go beyond that, we have been, uh, programmed by the media and interest that don't really, uh, have our, uh, safety and things like that, uh, as a priority. So, uh, you know, they gotta fill up the prisons, the prison industrial complex, they gotta fill up the, um, the, the morgues and the cemeteries and things like that, so it's a business, uh, as well, and we need to wake up and to, uh, you know, speak on that. So, you know, I happen to be a, a conscious hip hop artist as well, like Oba Brother Shaw and that's, uh, things I speak on in my music.
Definitely, um, you know, I've personally always felt that, you know, something that some of the black communities are missing and just communities in general is somebody, a singular entity to go to. Sometimes, uh, you know, as far as to get something done or have something, you know, completed, you do want to be able to go to one person, cause too many heads, it's kinda hard to talk to. And basically, what you're doing is you are being a voice of your district, you are being, uh, the, the person of your district. But of course, they do say with that power comes that responsibility.
That's right.
Um, how do you relate that responsibility? How do you take it? And, you know, how do you show, you know, as far as this is for you and this is the way that our community should go as far as with your thoughts?
Well, that's a, a very interesting question, um, uh, you know, can you kinda reframe it?
Yeah, so as simple as the power you have as far as to be able to go out, they're gonna look to you to speak on issues that come up. Issues at hand, I know you seen in the past, even yourself have been part of, and to go to a singular entity and for you to be the voice. If you are gonna be that voice and have that responsibility, how do you take that? How do you accept that responsibility and what do you do with it?
Well, one, um, I have taken the responsibility, that's why, um, you know, I took the time to, uh, get my twenty-five signatures to get on the ballot, to, uh, walk these streets and knock on these doors and put these yard signs down and, um, create designs, uh, you know, for my campaign, uh, things like that. So I've taken the responsibility by, uh, living it, uh, but first accepting it and living on that, uh, you know, living that every day. And I'm seeing the way people, uh, interact with me, people, they want a leader, they want somebody to look, uh, look up to and not just look up to, but to speak on them, cause it, whether if it's, um, a, a person from a lower class, that's, uh, voices ignored or somebody from a higher class that feels like, uh, their voice might be too loud, they might want somebody who, um, you know, who has less to lose or they feel like they have less to lose to speak for them. So I wanna represent everybody and that's exactly what I'm gonna do, uh, in my district. Um, I know I keep saying I am from the street, I am for the streets and which I am, I am from the everyday, uh, uh, person, but I understand that this responsibility, I have to be for everybody in my district and, um, I understand that and I take this responsibility serious and when I speak to my constituents or my, uh, the people in my community that could potentially vote for me and when I speak to them, I make sure I listen to them, I don't interrupt them, whether they agree with me or not, uh, or if I agree with them or not, I still take time to listen to them because I, I wasn't, I'm not elected or, or, or you won't, you're not elected as a, a elected official to only, um, deal with the people that, that, uh, you relate to or that, uh, you know, speak, um, what you like to hear, you know what I'm saying? That relate to you, so you gotta still deal with people that, um, don't agree with you and don't have your same mentality. So, um, I walk with that and I understand that and I'm gonna represent, uh, everyone in my district.
Definitely, um, of course, I wanna discuss some of the current issues that, of course, have been brought up in Dallas and as far as, you know, issues that you yourself have made sure you've been a part of to rectify. Um, the situation that you were speaking on in Deep Ellum, uh, where they saw on, uh, the young lady. Um, I believe you went out after you heard charges were brought against her, uh, for the felony charges as far as, you know, after the fact. Tell us your thought process on that as far as just, uh, what happened with, you know, as far as how he was charged and released and of course, the, 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 the Dallas Police doing their, technically their job to charge as charges were brought and then of course dropped.
Um, so my thought process, uh, one, you know, I was actually out there, um, before they, they dropped, put felony charges on her. I was out there when, you know, they, when it first went down, before they charged her, so, and then I went back to City Hall, you understand me? Uh, when, when my, I'm not even gonna say, I went back to City Hall and that's when, you know, our comrades, we, we went together and we put pressure on them and, um, you know, you seen that the charges were dropped on the sister. But what I would say is, as to why, it's just showing you the reason why I'm not accepting money from the Dallas Police, uh, Association. Um, that's a spit in the face, do you charge victims of a crime, um, for a crime? Um, it was Lee Merritt that was like, do you charge, uh, it was so profound what the brother said. He was like, do you charge a rape victim for public intoxication? I was like, damn! That puts a perspective on how, um, Renee Hall and the, uh, Dallas Police Culture, uh, uh, views black people in, uh, this, this, this society and that's not fair because you gotta be about the safety of everybody. Don't be about the safety of, uh, people who have your interests in mind and, uh, the people you have, uh, interest with. Be about everybody in your city, so, uh, that's what I say about that. But also, it speaks to the culture of racism and, uh, bigotry in Dallas because, uh, if Austin Punk Sheffield was able to not hit her one time, not hit her two time, not hit her three time, not even four, he hit her five time with some real mean punches, they must've been weak, cause he, uh, you know, she was, uh, warrior goddess was still standing. But, uh, the fact of the matter is, why are you so comfortable to be able to do that in broad day, or, or, you know, uh, in the open, in the well-lit, uh, atmosphere? It's with the handgun, it only speaks to the culture of, uh, uh, white supremacy and bigotry in this, that, uh, city and that the Dallas Police Association is, uh, um, you know, supporting.
And of course, to move on to a more recent issue, of course, there was a scenario of, uh, transgender woman or who identifies, um, a male who I believe identifies as a female was, of course, assaulted, um, and, uh, the FBI came to Dallas, of course, to look into this as a hate crime. Uh, do you, do you yourself personally feel, uh, what you witnessed, if you've seen it from what you heard, that, uh, that was in itself a hate crime?
So I personally don't know, understand the complete nature of what a hate crime is and what it is on paper and all of that, but, uh, from my perspective, I feel like a hate crime was kinda, or that it was implemented as a way to determine or describe, uh, racial and, uh, basically, um, uh, you know, uh, attacks towards, you know, uh, black people and minorities. So to put a charge of a black person for a hate crime is kinda interesting, but, um, I don't, I don't know if it's a hate crime, you know what I'm saying? I, I can't, that, that's, uh, beyond, um, what, what I can actually, uh, directly answer. But I would say that, um, I do think bro went way too far, I think that was, uh, a very terrible situation, you know, regardless of somebody's, uh, sex or sexual orientation, I don't think that's the, uh, the matter here. I think, um, that just speaks to the culture of violence that we gotta stop in our own communities, you understand? So, uh, that's what I'm more focused on.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Um, speaking of that culture, uh, of course, as you said, you are in the streets, um, you know, we were able to go to the, uh, the candlelight vigil that, uh, was held for Nipsey Hustle by K-104979, uh, Bebe and the Row, uh, the artists out here in Dallas, um. To see you out there, you know what I'm saying, that's definitely lets me know that you're in the streets and, you know, you're definitely there to touch the people and talk to the people. Um, that scenario in which, uh, you have, uh, a black man who is a business owner, who decides to stay in his hood, in his home, to run a business, um, like you said, you do put business over, I mean, you don't put business over community and things of that nature.
That's right.
What is your thoughts process on that as far as a young entrepreneur keeping business in his hood and just what took place with that as far as the overall scale of what happened there?
Right, so let me, uh, definitely start off by saying that I'm not anti-business, I'm definitely, uh, pro-business entrepreneurship. What I'm, uh, saying, what I'm saying, uh, uh, I'm not putting businesses over the people, I'm not putting businesses that don't have our interest and that is not us, we need to be, uh, uh, just like, follow the example that Nipsey Hustle, uh, you know, showed us that we need to be invested in our community and he showed us that platform and, uh, shout out to that brother, you know, along live the hustle, the marathon continues, you dig? But, uh, but definitely, so, uh, putting businesses over the people, that's something I'll never do, but, uh, when I say that, we have to own our businesses in our community. We don't need to be driving forty-five minutes, thirty minutes to get to work and things of that nature. Why, uh, we doing that if we invest in the, um, businesses and the spaces and developments, uh, in our community? And when I say developments, what I'm talking about is like, when you see, uh, a shopping center or, or a construction being built, that's what you call, uh, refer to as a, a development. So we can, what's stopping us from developing those in our own neighborhood, just like Nipsey Hustle, you know what I'm saying?
What would be your ideal Dallas in the next ten years, uh, going into the year twenty thirty? Uh, what would be your idea of Dallas?
Man, I, I, I would like to see, uh, Dallas to be a world-class city, something that it is, uh, not currently, uh, talking about, making it equitable, uh, for, for all people in Dallas. But I would like to, uh, start seeing people not, um, be, be, uh, afraid to, to speak about things like, uh, uh, race and, and fairness, uh, for all. And I, I would, I would like to see, uh, so-called minorities, uh, uh, black and brown people in this coun- or in this city to be more, uh, invested in, excuse me, uh, more represented in the, uh, uh, political atmosphere in Dallas and also in the business realm and those conversations. So another part of my platform is to, uh, increase the, uh, amount of, uh, contracts that are given to, uh, so-called minorities, uh, you know, in Dallas. So I would like to see that number, uh, increase, I would like to see the effects of that. I would like to see, um, people from the neighborhood take control, uh, of the economics in their neighborhood, the politics in their neighborhood, and I would like to stop seeing the misrepresented not being represented. I would like to see, um, uh, city resources and money not be spent on, uh, you know, uh, uh, new police, uh, gadgets for the police or, uh, or, um, instruments that's, you know, basically for personal gain. And I would like to stop seeing, um, our civil servants and elected officials, uh, scamming and stealing from the people because that really, um, accumulates and matriculates to the regular, uh, working person. And, um, that's what I'd like to see Dallas as a world-class city.
Amen, amen, I wanna hear this young brother speak, I don't, I know he said he was, I know you said he had something to do with defense, like teaching defense and whatnot, I don't know what his, his whole story is, but I would like to hear what's going on with that.
Straight up, would you like to share, brother?
If you alright with that.
Nah, I'm fine, I usually don't speak when I have a gun in my hand, but I'm definitely cool with that. So it's whatever you wanna ask.
Oh, I just wanna know what, what, what should? Right, basically, and run, cause I know he said he's been training with you, I don't know if y'all are affiliated or anyway, but I'm, if he's, you're teaching him something.
Well, pretty much, uh, my name is Rockem Balagun, I'm from Oak Cliff, um, Keystone Westmore to be exact. Um, pretty much, uh, you know, we're a part of an organization and network and we're all affiliated with this network here in Dallas with Gorilla Mainframe and just the black militant, um, community of Dallas. Um, our goal is to be the arms and legs of the community, okay? And to be able to look out for the community best interest in mind, no matter what it may be. So we believe in taking on different cultures. One, a culture of self-defense, just like Brother Shaw, uh, spoke, spoke of initially. Um, one thing that we are is vulnerable in our community, our queens are vulnerable, we seen that with Da Lee. Um, you know, our kids are vulnerable, you know, they get attacked by each other and, and, and as well as adults and, and by people at school and things of that nature. And us as black men, we're very vulnerable. And so, one thing we do is we create a culture of self-defense because with this culture, we don't just, um, we just don't teach, you know, defending yourself and combat, but we teach principles, rules of engagements and things of that nature that go along with it. Uh, our thing is this, we wanna teach young boys in the community how to survive. We have private property, we have our own gun range with steel targets, reactionary targets and things of that nature. We, what we do is we like to take boys from neighborhoods like Highland Hills, you know, let's say from the age group ten to, 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 you know, teenage, take them out there to private property. We wanna be the first one to educate them on a firearm and the force safety rules of a firearm, you know? So they will understand how the firearm works and how it function before they even touch it. We wanna be the first one to teach them that as well as teach them manhood. Because a problem in our community is that we're not the ones responsible, black brothers like everybody you see, we're not the ones that's doing it, it's always some hood cat, uh, uh, another young brother that may be a few years older than them, teaching them that. So that's why we have that institution, but that's not the only thing we're limited to. We also have a program called Food, Clothes and Shelter. Now with Food, Clothes and Shelter, we understand that Food, Clothes and Shelter, everybody that's on this planet deserve to have that, no matter who they are or what they are, you know? So what we do is we try to promote a culture of the community doing for itself, for us, by us, by showing the community, hey, some of these little issues that we have, we can take care of ourselves. We don't have to depend on a white man to beg him to intervene and look out for our best interest. So that's how we use Food, Clothes and Shelter. We also, just like what, um, Devonte Peters, brother, AKA Brother Shaw is involved in, is Community Garden. Community Garden goes right along with Food, Clothes and Shelter. We talks about Walmart, we talk about, just like Brother Shaw was talking about, big businesses, okay? Big businesses is the ones that he's, he does not represent, but he does represent businesses by the community. Big businesses does not work for the community best interest, it works for his best interest. So what we try to do is be able to have barter programs for poor people in our community to where that we can grow food and trade food, you know, and we can be able to cut costs and not only that, but be a stronger community when we're able to feed, clothes and defend ourselves. And so, the institutions that are, that we represent is just an institution of black people doing for ourselves and not begging other people to do, you know? And we wanna be an example by putting into application, okay? So also, um, two thousand seven, I mean, two thousand seventeen, I was arrested by the FBI due to being a part of all of these initiatives and I was labeled as a black identity extremist. Um, they had me, um, in Seagerville Federal Detention and while I was fighting the charge, you know, I became more educated, the FBI have been following me and my organization around for years, you know, and gathering data and information and, um, they have been following me around the country when I go speak in other cities and states. And I was able to beat that charge, you know, due to a judge being fair and looking at the charges and seeing it is frivolous. And so, that right there kinda confirms that anything that black people do that's productive and if the, if the police come down and show repression, you know that it's going somewhere in a direction. And so, with Brother Shaw, you know, our goal is to, he's somebody that we see as a comrade, he has been boots on the ground since he have been involved, you know, when he initially got involved, you know, we have seen him really grow. He's been involved in numerous issues such as the issue that happened in South Dallas back in two thousand and sixteen in April where the Klan, which is a racist group called Bear, Bureau of Anti-Islamic Relations, come to South Dallas and do a armed patrol in our community in front of the mosque. So Brother Shaw was one of the, um, influential people who responded and coordinated about sixty to seventy armed brothers and sisters to be there to repel not only that group, but the Dallas Police Department who escorted them into the community. So that's what we're about, we have no shape or form, we're like water, you know what I mean? We're, we're a gas, a liquid and a solid and we don't take no, uh, particular shape. You know, we're willing to have, um, youth programs and teach youth culture and things of that nature as well as stand up against the police in an armed conflict. And so that's pretty much how our network is.
Man, this is a beautiful thing, man, I just, man, I can't say it too. Definitely, man, that's a, that's a mouthful, let me, uh, have a quick question for Brother Shaw. I'm still, uh, he said reactionary targets, man, that's serious, that's serious. Um, I do have to ask you, for the Caucasian vote, which of course, there are in your district as well and they're, you know, gonna want to have somebody, whoever's in office, uh, look out for them too. What is your thought process for the, like I said, the Caucasian, they may not be minority or they may be minority or feel themselves associating with my, uh, associated with minorities themselves and, uh, you know, they wanna go out and vote too?
Well, um, what I have to say about that, which is a beautiful question, uh, I think I kinda already answered that when I stated that I'm gonna represent everybody in my district, uh, equally and fairly, um, but at the same time, and it is still a fair question, uh, just, you know, by the way we're talking, uh, it, just to keep it a hundred, uh, you know, even with my energy, it's been like, you know, mainly, um, Caucasian people that have been, uh, supporting my campaign financially. So, uh, even with me being the way that I am, they, they see, um, So, uh, even with me being the way that I am, they, they see, um, that we're not gonna be sold out and they appreciate that. They don't want anybody that's gonna be fake. But, uh, just to go even further, uh, based on the two thousand eleven census, uh, white people, you know, Caucasians or whatever we gonna call those, that group of people, they're only possess, uh, possess about a, uh, about a, a ten percent, uh, uh, so, uh, uh, population in my district. So, they are a minority in my district with the Hispanic, uh, population to be at about, uh, forty-eight and the, uh, you know, black, uh, population being about, uh, you know, uh, you know, the remainder of that, that pie.
Definitely. It comes, uh, uh, election day, uh, their kids still on the shelf, uh, grownups are still on the shelf about going out and vote and about who to vote for.
Right.
Once again, what, to get them up at that moment, get out and vote. Go ahead and, uh, you know, I want you to just go ahead and once again, give your spill because I don't, I, I wanna make sure if they're, eh, should I vote, should I don't vote? We seen with the last presidential election, what happens when you don't vote.
Right.
Um, I want you to go and give your spill again as far as why the importance of them getting up and going out to vote.
I'ma say, man, get your ass up and get up there and vote. You get out there and you get in these streets and you do something, it is very important. And I feel you, uh, a year ago, I was in your same position. I was like, man, am I gonna vote for what? Or two years ago, am I gonna vote, uh, for what? You know what I'm saying? But, and, and I didn't because I didn't see anybody that looked like me, that talked like me, that walked like me or somebody that I've, uh, seen in my community or my schools or anything like that. So, I could definitely relate to, uh, people not being interested in voting, not, uh, believing in the system and, uh, things like that. I'ma tell you, Devonte Peters, uh, Devonte D. Peters don't believe in the system, but I do believe in myself. So, I'ma, uh, impart that same ism on you. If you don't feel like, uh, you have the person, um, um, that, uh, the candidate is gonna represent you, then you get your ass up and you run, you understand me? Run twenty twenty-one, uh, run, uh, twenty, uh, uh, twenty-three, whatever. You get up, if, and you believe yourself, if you don't believe, uh, have faith in these candidates, have faith in the system, have faith in yourself and take up that responsibility like Devonte D. Peters did when I got my twenty-five signatures and I got on the ballot. So, I'ma say, I'ma give you the same ism. Get your twenty-five signatures, get on the ballot. That's an accomplishment within itself and that's something that you can really do. Get your petition from the, uh, yo, yo, city secretary and get your, uh, uh, and vote. May fourth is the election. This is a, a historic, excuse me, a historic election. You have the part, uh, opportunity to take part in history by electing somebody that, um, that is, uh, for you, that is not a politician, I'm a people-tion, you understand? I'm for the people, I'm for the culture and I also happen to be a revolutionary hip-hop conscious artist. So, this is unprecedented. This move that we're doing, this is unprecedented, uh, uh, I would say possibly in the history of the United States, but I'm gonna go to definitely, uh, stamp and say for sure, uh, in Dallas, Texas. So, uh, be part of history. Devonte D. Peters, May fourth, uh, if you don't wanna wait too long and you already know who the right decision is, get there early at the polls, April twenty-second to the thirtieth, that's early voting, you did.
Man, man, man. Brother, man, he really out here in the streets, really holding it down. This is what I like to see, man. Hey, y'all go out and support this man for real, man.
I'm so, man, I'm so.
No, I'm voting.
I'm voting.
I got your vote.
I'm saying, yeah, you got my vote.
You got my vote?
You got my vote. As a matter of fact, we. You ain't got no choice to vote. Now, we, we starting to move, man, man, we starting to move. We want everybody to get up, man, make sure we see, if anything, just get up and vote, you know what I'm saying? Do your thing.
Yeah.
Man, it's a blessing, um, for those that wanna follow the movement, see where you're gonna be next, uh, follow the campaign trail, come out and support, uh, go and tell them how to follow you, how to see where you're gonna be next and kinda what's going on with it.
Okay, for sure, uh, devonteddpeters.org, uh, that, get the spelling right, you know what I'm saying? Uh, two A's, one E, devonteddpeters.org. You can follow my campaign, see what I got going on, research me if you wanna make an informed decision, uh, I'm with that. Um, uh, trap to vote, uh, get out to vote, this is a political concert, the first of its kind. We engage in the youth, uh, we engage in the communities that don't normally vote. Who gonna be there? Uh, 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 Tony Gunner gonna be there, Seven the Great gonna be there, Dre Polo gonna be there, you understand me? Minx, Destiny Blue, uh, QP, you did, uh, my comrade Shaw Reef gonna be there, Jet Rose, uh, Anonymous, so it's going down. Uh, we got Lee Merritt, y'all Fayo Balagun speaking, you dig, Trey Arnold, uh, also, uh, other city council candidates, they also gonna be speaking, uh, Brother Shaw, you know what I'm saying? I'm hosting that thing. So, that's what we doing, man, pull up to the trap, uh, April twenty-fifth, seven PM at the Friedman, twenty-six, twenty-six Commerce. But other than that, man, we got a youth mentorship program in the Browns. Uh, we dealing with youth aged eleven to seventeen, working with commissary is very necessary, you understand me? We out here, man, we really in the trenches, support us. Uh, if you wanna get down, social media, uh, uh, Brother Shaw, B-R-O-T-H-A-S-H-A-W-T on everything, you understand? So, uh, follow the culture, man, it's, it's a wave, it's a movement. Matter of fact, uh, 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 slave ships create waves. So, we on that Underground Railroad, we on that train, we got that choo-choo, you understand me? Devonte D. Peters, man.
There you go, man.
Hey, shout out Real Life Street Star, man, I really appreciate y'all. I appreciate y'all, uh, y'all got the Devonte D. Peters endorsement, you know what I'm saying? I'm endorsing y'all, I appreciate y'all, y'all doing beautiful things in this, uh, podcast. This episode is a, a, a great one for the culture. Y'all got a political candidate, that's how we, uh, make change in our communities by engaging, uh, those who represent us. So, I would love to represent y'all, I appreciate y'all.
Let me get, uh, right now, real quick, can you shout out some other African-American candidates that are doing their thing? That might be getting overlooked right now?
Uh, straight up, we gonna, uh, throw some love for District Seven, uh, Shadé Johnson doing her thing. We gonna put a one, a stamp on Dee Dee for District, uh, Ten, uh, Dee Dee Alexander, that's the, uh, block walking queen, you understand? Who else is out there? Uh, man, it's a lot of people, uh, out there doing their thing, you know what I'm saying? Um, hey, shout out to the mayoral candidates, uh, doing their thing too, you know what I'm saying? So, ay, yeah.
Well, there you go, man, there you have it, man. Uh, blessings, intelligent, well-spoken, very articulate, man. A, a guy you wanna see represent you, man. Devonte D. Peters, it's not even, I need to say it, man, you are a real-life street star, man, we salute you.
All power to the people.
Shout out to Real Life Street Stars, nigga. Morning. Ay.